Anderson.
Joe Plouffe.
And we only have, we don't have any applications for review tonight. The one piece that we do have on our agenda will be going through some of our zoning edits. So that's really the only thing we have on the agenda tonight. And Steph's gonna hopefully lead us somewhat through that, but if you need some help, I can step through other comments. I know Dale has a few additional inputs, so I'd like to just have this as a working session and, you know, talk, cross-talk is okay, little bit of it. So I guess, Stephanie, can you just give us an update of what we have in front of us?
Before you do that, Dirk, shouldn't one of us be seated?
Oh.
Not gonna be necessary.
We won't be voting, but I'd like to see Robert Davies for Teresa Bascom. Is anyone else missing? Okay. So you're in, buzzed tonight. In case we, well, we might vote on something.
We'll have one vote at least. It's my turn.
That's right. All right.
All right. Yeah, so I invited Dale here tonight to kind of give the other staff opinion and feel free to shoot questions at him and what he sees in the office and what comes across his desk. So Jen and I have been plugging away at the overall formatting. She was yelling at the computer when I left her in the office this afternoon. So it's just a constant, you know, ongoing process where we're just really trying to get everything settled and in its spot so that future, future edits can be made. So I don't really have anything for you guys to take home. I was, I did make a copy that Jen is bringing for Susan because she wasn't here last meeting and didn't get the handout. But other than that, it's kind of an ongoing process and there's not a lot for you guys to do other than the final review and to look and see if there's any glaring issues. So that's where we are with that.
And that's specifically just the format?
Just formatting, no substantive changes, you know, making sure the margins are all lined up, everything's numbered correctly, everything's alphabetical, that type of stuff.
Great.
And I know we had the backstory to all this, or back history on this. So the last meeting, the meeting before that, the joint meeting, we all agreed, or there's a discussion, basically we have our short list of things, which is clearing up the format, make that better first, and then a couple of other items, and then there's a longer list of priorities, so we're trying to tackle some for this ballot without overwhelming everybody, including the voters, and tackle some more. This was kind of like, these three items that we had on tonight were kind of like the first three to tackle.
And then moving on to Section C, it has the title Warren Article 3. This is Section C of the zoning ordinance. Nothing, no changes were made since the last meeting. You guys had some homework to decide on what you wanted to list for permitted uses because no permitted uses are listed at the moment. And then there are just some small changes moving forward, so, you know, breaking out A, B, C, D for those paragraphs, and then making that paragraph of lot setback requirements into a table so that it's more aesthetically pleasing and easier to understand.
So is this still part of the, like, non-substantive changes?
This is more substantive because you would be adding permitted uses.
Permitted uses, right, okay.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be included in that, in that first warrant article.
Okay.
And then we move on to frontage. So I did a lot of research on the whole frontage issue and it led me to circle around RSA 67441. And I also printed out some notes for you guys that should be right behind the frontage handout. So the top part is the law and then the bottom part is the follow-up conversation that I had with Stephen Buckley over at NHMA. And so basically, there was a policy that went through in 2018 that was developed, I think by the staff, Dale, correct me if I'm wrong, the staff and the selectmen, or select board, that kind of streamlined the permitting process for development on private and Class 6 roads as much as it can be. Other than that, because it is listed as, there should be, or frontage is required on a Class 5 road or better, everything gets kicked to the ZBA for variance. And it was Stephen's suggestion that we don't remove that from the ordinance.
And still have them go to the ZBA?
Still have them go to the ZBA. He did suggest at looking at, you know, why is it that all of these developments are requested on these private roads? And that might be a question for the Master Plan Update Committee. But it wouldn't be as simple as a zoning change because it is state law. And it would be more of a vision and spirit of the ordinance change. And then these, these warrant articles are set up with, you know, what's there, a couple of questions for you guys to ponder once we get into the discussion, and then some examples of surrounding communities down at the bottom. And then the last one I have is temporary housing and zoning where I've actually started to draft up potential new language. So the way that this reads is red text with the line through it is what was there and I'm suggesting removing. And then anything in red with an underline is new text to include. And this was, this is basically the Deerfield Shell and I've added in Nottingham substance. So everything that we took last week, or I'm sorry, last meeting with some comments from Dale, thank you, and just started to kind of play around and see what exactly it would look like to develop this into a more cohesive section. And then again, you have those questions down at the bottom, issues to discuss, things that I want to hear from you guys, I don't want to just assume. One thing that Dale and I talked about was the occupation, the initial occupation period. We had discussed anywhere between 30 to 60 days at the last meeting. It was Dale's suggestion that we bump that up to four months, so I did put that in there, but again, for you guys to discuss and chat with Dale about. And I think that's it on the overview. I know Dale has a list that he wants to go through. Are there any questions right off of that?
Are we gonna go to the substance of these things?
Yes.
We'll step through these. Before we do, maybe Dale, if you've got some, I guess, additional ones that might lend us to think about when we talk about those.
A lot of these, I do have some, and as you pointed out, Ed, we don't want to overwhelm the voters, so I understand we're not gonna take all of these on right now. A lot of these tie into these three at different locations and stuff like that. And besides that, I did want to get them at least in front of you, so we're considering them now, or if not, when we do this next year, it's not a surprise next year. But I have 10 of them, but it's not 10 complete ones because a lot of them tie into these, there's multiple ones. I've made a copy of what our priorities are. These priorities are just based upon what I'm seeing is the amount of variances for one, and two, code enforcement violations. There's a lot of things that I cannot enforce because the ordinance doesn't let me, and that wasn't the intent of the ordinance. And I've kind of prioritized them as how I think they are important there from start to finish.
Okay, so would it be good just to go through each warrant article and then have those discussed? You know, just as a, and then Dale, these, it sounds like, it looks like some of these will drop into that discussion.
And some of them are very minor but very important.
Yep. So why don't we talk about the warrant article three, which is the permitted uses? The setbacks, is that pretty much the gist for warrant article three?
Yep, the setbacks didn't change, they're just reformatted.
So the only part of the warrant article three would be then adding the permitted uses?
Yes. And then there's some, a couple places where the wording changed, so the addition of setback provisions down in 3B and then adding pre-existing, non-conforming as opposed to grandfather.
There was one change, I think it's not being taken out now, where you talk about the, where it talks about the lot envelope, the 220-foot, 200 by 200-foot square. Originally, I think the fit was gonna be taken out, but that should be in there, like fit for building, we have a definition for that.
Yep.
But I don't know if we lost the word four, or if that was not in there ever.
I think I had originally changed it to four and
Or fit four.
Oh, we did, okay.
Fit four building.
Fit four building, okay. Sorry about that.
Dale, doesn't your comment about the setbacks apply to this warrant article three also?
It does, this is one of the big ones, actually. And I guess the way I look at it is for every permit that comes in front of me, how many am I denying? And if I'm denying a considerable amount, it's a possibility that it is not the applicant but the ordinance itself, especially if we send them to the ZBA and they're getting variances. So there's two aspects of this that I would like you to look at or consider. The first one is septic. This is humongous. If you have a two-acre lot right now, you have to have 50 feet to put your septic in, and that is, that is just extreme. In most cases, that's your house, people are just trying to get the house in, and try to get 50 feet in is nearly impossible. The state only requires 10. And if you look on Steph's last page, you can see what they require. Pretty much everyone that comes in, I send to the ZBA and they all get approved. Literally all of them get variances for septic. So I would, if we change anything, I would, this would be the biggest one that I would ask you to consider is lowering septic setbacks to 20 feet. They're eventually gonna get it anyways, and we're just putting an unnecessary hardship on the people to go through the process.
What is the, what is the typical setback that they're asking for, you know?
Well, they're trying to meet it, the state, sometimes if, if a designer comes in and they're not familiar with us, which is their fault, they just come in at 10 feet because that's what the state requires and that, the state will approve it at 10 feet. If it is an undersized lot, pre-existing, all of that, it goes down to 20. But if you have a new home, we're saying you have to be 50 feet away. And mostly people try to get it down to 20 feet, and that, that is reasonable, that's still above what the state, and in most cases, I think that would reduce maybe 75, 80% making up a number of, most people can get it down to 20. And for those that can't, then they go for variance, it wouldn't be everybody. So I would ask that we reduce septic setbacks to 20 feet regardless of whether it's a conforming or non-conforming lot. And that's my most important one that, tonight.
In the ZBA cases, these have been, they're two-acre lots or they're under two-acre?
It doesn't matter.
Well, it does, because
No, I'm saying as far as what variances have been approved.
I've seen that there've been lake lots that are under two acres in size, they're non-conforming, so they're not even coming up against the 50-foot standard, they're coming against the 20-foot standard.
Right.
And they're asking for variance of that.
What I meant by it doesn't matter is I'm seeing them all being approved by the ZBA regardless of the lot size.
Right.
I haven't seen any, and I don't want to misquote, but I cannot, I cannot think of a single one that has not passed because of setbacks. That tells me that there's a major problem with the actual ordinance. And again, that's still double what the state requires. Now, the other thing to consider too is the state just passed a law for replacement septic, not new now, let me be very clear, it's for replacement. They don't even need our permission, we don't have to be pre-approval. So let's say the state, somebody goes to the state, they're replacing a failed system, the state can just approve it to 10 feet. So if we're having 20 and we're trying to work with people ahead of time, we might even be able to catch more.
Interesting.
That's only for failed replacements, not new. So I would ask the board to consider, out of everything, that change right there.
And you have suggested change all the setbacks to 20?
Yes, regardless of whether it's a conforming, non-conforming.
Whether it's sewage or whether it's water, everything at 20?
It's all, yes.
Do you know if there's a different standard for, because like we specify like the property line or water's edge, is there a different standard with?
Well, there is with that, so if we're talking, this wouldn't apply to that because they would still have to go through control and permit. So if we're worried about environmental reasons, it's putting a septic on water, there's still, this wouldn't affect that, they're still gonna go through the state and get a septic, and the state is gonna be very strict on that. And ultimately, the state is, they've got the authority, they're gonna approve the septic, it's not us, we just proved setbacks on it. And they would be very strict on waterfront.
But what you're talking about is the 20-feet specific just to the septic?
Septic.
Other setbacks we have?
We could talk about those later.
Yeah.
Specifically septic, 20 feet, no matter the size of the lot.
Yeah, I was just looking at, I'm thinking about the, the new potential chart, I'm gonna have to add, first break it out separately.
I do have some concerns about that, but that is separate, that there's, you know, that'll be up to you. I do think that some of the 50 feet is still excessive on that. I wouldn't want to come down to 20, but I would ask that we look at that in a second.
Yeah, we can.
But for septic, I would.
Well, let's, what do people feel about the 20, 30, 40, 50, 10?
I was just gonna pose a question to Dale, I mean, from my perspective, what I see is, you know, it's about protection of water, really, and not as much setback, but the radius, the well radius, for example, really. So, I mean, can you speak to that, Dale, or am I off?
Nope, so the well radius is gonna be 75 feet regardless. And if we're worried about water and neighbors' waters, just because you're 20 feet near your neighbor's property line, you still have to be 75 feet away from their well. And the state is so strict, there's a case going on right now where there's an abandoned well, but it's still on record. The state will not approve that septic because there is a well on record. So as far as what you're saying, this isn't gonna affect anyone's safety or water, it's really just strictly about almost looking at septic as a structure, and therefore we're saying it's 50 feet. It doesn't affect anyone's water or health at all.
I think from an engineering standpoint, if 20 feet is more than adequate for sewage systems, then I would say that that probably is the way we should go.
Yeah, I mean, I often just like to defer to the state because that's who's approving these. You know, when coming to drainage or a lot of other state permits, that we don't really have that approving authority, it's not our jurisdiction. But in this case, I think with the septic, I mean, there, 10 feet is pretty, is the absolute minimum. I see a lot of the other communities are at that 20-foot, because that's what this chart, is that what the chart at the bottom, Steph, of staff comments, is that, that chart?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The chart at the bottom of the warrant article C, staff comments, is that for the septic setbacks, or are those just the dimensional rear, front?
I believe that's just dimensional.
Okay. I mean, I, I see 20 feet is definitely a, we should consider that.
I guess the only other would be, would that negatively impact a neighboring parcel that yet, that doesn't yet have its well in place or anything? Make it more difficult for them to place their own well? But then they can sign a waiver with the state, I believe, that says they understand they're within less than 75 feet and they can
If I understand your question right, you're saying like if a neighboring lot doesn't have anything yet, but if we put this 20 feet, it's going to, yes, that is a downside, but it is kind of a first come, first served in that sense that we're not gonna stop progress? And if somebody doesn't ever develop their lot, are we gonna stop this person from developing theirs when this one may not develop for another 20, you know? You are right that that is going to limit where they could put their well. But even at that point, there are waiver processes and stuff like that where people can sign off and back and forth, that they have that right when they go through the process.
And for, for new subdivisions, this doesn't really impact our new subdivisions at all because we require that the entire well radius beyond, be contained within the lot anyhow, except open space subdivisions, which they can go off the back into the common land, so this would be
For water, it doesn't, but it's still, right now, we're still going by the 50-foot, which makes, you know?
Oh yeah, I'm saying for the well radius.
For well radius, you're correct.
So we're not stuck as much with the well, we're stuck with the septic.
Yep, exactly.
But it makes the well more difficult to put in, even a brand-new lot, because you've got septic somewhere 50 feet away from a property line, if we have to have the well all the way on that property as well. It's getting tight.
I think the other player here too is that we do allow accessory buildings 20 feet, that's a structure that really, you know, really, if you think about it, what's the difference, it's a structure either way.
Yeah, I can't remember the argument, that was, it was a few years ago when we went through this section and reworded this, I know there was an argument for it, but I can't remember what it was, to keep it, to keep the septic specifically carved out into that 50-foot.
I guess my only, I don't want to say rebuttal, but my only comment on that is, if everyone is coming to us, we're denying them all, and we send them to the ZBA, and they all get the variance, then it's not really, whatever it is, it's not a valid, you know, we either need to look at how we're doing variances or change the ordinance, they all can't be wrong.
So if we, it, does anybody have opposition if we, at least at this point, move forward with saying 20 feet for the septic setbacks? I mean, it's, obviously has to get voted on by town and all that, but if we make this a point of this was where we recommended it, then we can go move on.
Do you want to have a formal motion? Put the record?
Oh, do we need?
You don't need a motion, you're just working on a draft.
Yeah.
Steph, I don't know what that means, we need to kind of reword or carve out and add a second line there, based on how that works with the water's edge portion of it in the RSA there.
Have a separate item.
Figure it out, yeah.
Yeah.
So changing it to 20 feet? Is there any opposition to that?
I just have a clarifying question. Is that for both pre-existing, non-conforming lots and new lots, or is that just for the new lots?
Well, we already have 20 for the pre-existing, so I think we just leave that the same.
So they would both be 20?
So they'd both be 20. Do you have any issues with that?
No, that's what I'm asking for, every lot, regardless of size, whether they have a plat, whatever, everybody is 20 feet, that's our setback, that's what I'm requesting. If I may, the only other one on this that I would request you look at, I agree with having our setbacks for any structures or dwellings and things like that even, but accessory structures, we're asking for 50 feet also. Somebody wants to put up a shed on their lot, it's the same scenario, you have two acres and you might only be 50 feet already to get your house, and now we're telling people they can't even put a shed. I would ask that we look at considering, just for accessory structures, reducing the setbacks for those. I mean, most people in my town, my shed's almost on my property line, it's just the way it works for most people, and we're denying a lot of people simple sheds.
I thought we were at 20 feet.
Yeah, 20 at the front.
You're looking at 50 from the front, and it's different, different setbacks for where you're coming from, if it's the front or the back. So somebody's, if we're out on, you know, if we're out here on stage road, 50 feet might be appropriate, but most people's lots aren't designed where, where major roads or anything like that, that the front of the lot might be their only yard. And to tell somebody that they can't put a shed in their front lot, they're gonna put it on the side, it's, it's just very, I think it's overburdened for a, just for accessory structures. I do agree that we need to have all these setbacks for our major construction and things like that to preserve people's privacy and rights and, but for set, for accessory structures, I would ask that you consider reducing setbacks.
I think at some point, too, Dale, we're gonna be talking about setbacks for the main structure on frontage anyway, with the recommendations Steph had put together on the bottom of Article 3 down here, so that's also up for discussion. So if we change the regular setback for the main building, that might just come along for the ride. So if we decide to bump it to 30 feet back rather than 50, then that
That would be acceptable, you know?
That could be part of the package.
I think we still need to think a little bit more about how that would affect it, the view and character, you know, putting a lot of sheds in the front, front of, in the front yards, doesn't really go to the rural character that Nottingham is, so we should probably, you know, think about that a little bit of, my preference would definitely be to have sheds in the side or the rear. I know it's not always that people put their driveways and want a shed next to their driveway.
It's a fair point, because then a waiver, if that's the only place that they could put it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a fan of having it 20 feet or 10 feet from property line, you know, side and rear, but, you know, the front yard is
That's critical. That's a fair compromise, but even, I think the way, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't our, isn't our setbacks for front and rear 50, and from the sides 20? So even if we just reduce the rear?
No, it's, it's 20 on the, on the rear. Side and rear.
Side and rear is 20, yep.
It's only the front that's 50.
And that was a recent change in the zoning.
Okay.
So that's, that's something that I think would be helpful to go, if somebody wants it in their front yard to go to the zoning board?
Okay.
I think that's, that's fair. Then it allows the zoning board, if in that specific instance, if it's next to a whole bunch of other older homes that, you know, have sheds not out in the front yard, if allow that one person to have it, they may deny it.
Fair enough.
So should we look at the permitted uses, did everybody get a chance to do some homework and think about any additional permitted uses or reviewing these ones? Whether some of these should either drop out or stay in? Or added?
Just a reminder, this was just an example of everything that could be in here, it wasn't necessarily suggestions for Nottingham, just examples from surrounding communities, as Jen put it, everything but the kitchen sink.
So let's go down each one.
And kind of the discussion on this last time was, we have this, we have permitted uses in every other zone, but we left them out of this, which is kind of a, so really nothing is permitted.
Or everything's permitted.
Or everything's permitted.
Well, let's just go down what we think is appropriate for the residential agricultural district, single-family residents and associated accessory dwelling units. Yes?
Yeah, I'd probably just word that more like the one in the Yeah, I'd probably just word that more like the one in the town center, district, residential, single-family, multifamily, not to exceed four units or...
Well, we already have, there's another multifamily down here, I think. Single-family residents and associated accessory dwelling units. What does the one say for commercial?
The way we had it before in the town center district and the commercial industrial zone was residential, single-family and multifamily not to exceed four units. So I don't know if we want to keep that, same language to be consistent?
Do we want to keep that language to be consistent or do we want to just have it as a separate item? I mean, I think it's clearer if you have single-family homes, because it's kind of an and. It's either a single-family home or it's a four-unit. So it's almost, you're either going to do one or the other. So it's an and statement in there that can be just put as, you know, B.
But you need to have multifamily listed in this permitted use?
Yes, so we'll add multifamily, not exceeding four units.
After duplex?
Well, duplex would be included in that multifamily, correct, no?
Duplex too. So we'd only have, so...
There's two definitions, it's a duplex and then a multifamily. So they should be addressed individually.
So keeping it in numerical order, we'll have single-family, we'll have duplexes, and then we'll have multifamily.
Works.
So let's see. So we brush right over duplexes, is that fine in a residential district?
Yeah, I think we're going to have DABB and C for multifamily.
So this would be seasonal dwelling?
I think we can cross that off.
Well, yeah, what would that be?
Was my question?
A camp, would it be a...
Camp, the lake house.
A yurt.
I would imagine if we had a definition of seasonal dwelling, that maybe had different standards, like stuff that you might...
We do have a lot of, I think it's a point to stay in there, you might want to reword what you call it, but we have a lot of camps on the water that people were not approved by planning boards years ago to reside year-round in. And I think that's what it's referring to with all of the waterfront that we have. We don't let people live in them year-round because of the roads, because of plowing, because of, you know, whatever reason, the planning board. I think if you were to get rid of that, you would basically be telling everybody they could live in their house when previous planning boards have said, "No, you can't year-round, it's not a primary residence." They don't, might not have heat, they might not have insulation, it's just a summer camp and that's what that's referring to.
So keep that as a permitted use?
Yeah, it is a permitted use. I mean, we have them right now. In fact, a lot of times people will come to me and they want to turn their camps into year-round homes and they have to go because they preview, they don't have a plat, it wasn't approved. If you did that, you would be just opening up the floodgate, saying everybody could just live in their houses, that was not, the roads weren't designed for it, there's no plowing, anything like that. I think you really want to keep season, you might want to change the name of it or whatever, I don't care about that, but they're referring to camps and we have a lot of them.
But do we refer to camps or seasonal dwellings anyplace else in the zoning?
And how would, how would it be different than, so we'd have to make sure we define it, so we're not just seeing it as a single-family home.
That might be a problem that we define that it's not, but a lot of times, if you look at Avatar right now, it says right in there, and literally, we have hundreds of these that say seasonal only. But you're right, I don't know if we have a definition of what seasonal is.
No. So Steph, maybe that's something you could just look up a little bit, maybe just define that and how, make it consistent with...
There are some state input on this and, and federal, you know, regulations that refer to the heating system, the insulation, it's not just the roads and stuff like that, it's the design of the house itself, what it was built as. We're trying to get away from, you know, wasting energy and things like that, so there's a lot of requirements as far as that on a state level. So that might be a good place to start looking.
For a seasonal home?
What a seasonal is versus year-round, yes.
So are these pre-existing, they can't be built today?
That would be up to you, not me.
Yeah, they could be, they're just lots.
Yeah.
They're just, you know, lots that someone's going to drive a camper to.
Actually, I have one on my table right now that somebody is a seasonal camp and he does not want it to be year-round, but he wants to tear it down because a tree came down and there's a lot of damage and it wouldn't be worth repairing. So he's tearing it down and he is going to rebuild a seasonal camp. In fact, he's going to the ZBA, not for that reason, for other reasons, because it's on a private road and stuff like that. But yes, they, it would, it would apply to new ones too. People can have camps right now.
I'm thinking of maybe a hunting camp rather than one on the lake.
Could be anything. Hunting, just access to the water in the summer, whatever you want.
Yeah, and while those uses are there now, we, we don't want to prohibit them because it'll be very difficult to, you know, we'd have a lot of opposition. So, nor do I think we should prohibit them.
Well, something I found out, I found interesting is in building what the client wanted, they wanted a seasonal home. However, Avatar wasn't looking at it as a seasonal. They just looked at the structure and make their own decision on it. So if it appeared as a year-round home, that's how they looked at it.
So, and that's when we have to, we might even be talking about the same property. That's where you get into the deeds and stuff like that too. What was this authorized, you know? Going, going back to, a lot of times it's just extra work on my end that we have to dig way back.
Okay, so we'll do seasonal dwellings with a little bit more information on how we define them. Senior housing.
Yeah, there's question mark there, in my mind.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking that this is a dedicated 55-plus, 65-plus, whatever development.
So is that...
I don't even know if we have any like that.
All right, so I'll say, I've been thinking about that kind of thing, but...
Because you're getting old?
Maybe, maybe that's it, I don't know.
Sorry, Gary. But we all are.
You know, so wherever it is in whatever zone it happens to fall in, but now it's probably, let's say, a large area, doesn't become its own zone. That was, that's kind of where I was going.
And do you treat it, and do you treat it differently than, because what is seasonal, what is senior housing? It's, it's going to be either single-family residences, duplex or, or multifamily, unless you give it its own thing and then define.
And becomes more of a commercial.
Potentially, or not necessarily. I mean, you can have just a 55-plus community that's a bunch of multifamily houses or same-way houses and...
They could be tiny houses or smaller houses, separate, or they could be condo types.
Wouldn't that be more to do with the covenants put on by, like, let's say it's a developer. You're going to have a senior housing development, that would be a covenant you would put into your, in your deeds. That wouldn't be something that should be legislated by the planning board. I mean, I don't, I don't really see, I think I agree with whoever said that the senior housing is, it really fits in the first three categories. It's one of those three. How much further do we need to go in defining it?
Well, senior housing really just, it, it eliminates any of the younger people that can be there. That's really all that's doing.
But that, but is that part of our zoning?
No, I don't think we should have it.
Right.
I think it's too limiting and, you know, you're, you're excluding younger people from...
And as I said, that if you, if you, I'm a developer and I want to develop a place that's, a set of building lots, I would do it by covenant if I wanted to be a senior developer.
Does everyone agree and we can scratch that one off? Family daycare home.
I think we, well, we talked about, I think this came up from that one case we had with the home occupation. We offer, we include that in home occupations and I think that one was a little bit, so we allow that already. Under major home occupations.
So we would scratch that one out and just to have it included in our home occupation. Bed and breakfast.
It's a home occupation as well?
Mm-hmm.
It's a major.
Yeah, could be major, so we can scratch that one off and leave it under the home occupation. Accessory use, outbuildings? Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Farming and related agricultural uses?
Yes.
Home occupation?
Yes.
Shouldn't we have home occupations and major home occupations?
Well, the home occupation would just, that would key you into going to the definition of home occupation, I think that would be either minor or major.
Yep.
Manufactured homes excluding recreational vehicles and placed on a permanent foundation. Yes. So that's a yes?
Yep.
We allow it now?
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, as long as it meets all the other requirements of a lot.
Utility structures of less than 200 square feet in area designed to provide utility services to residential customers. So these are like telephone buildings. I don't even know if they have them anymore.
What? What's a telephone building?
They're just little huts that they had where all of the switches used to come in. I guess I'm aging myself now.
Would this be like a garage? You put your tractor in?
Like a little shelter thing, basically.
Yeah, what's the name for that?
Control houses, we call them on the electric side.
There you go.
How about a cell tower? Would that fit in that category?
I don't know what that is.
Utility structures of less than 200 square feet in area and designed to provide utility services to residential customers.
Under special exception, right.
Would this be like a communication tower?
I don't know, Steph, you put it in there, what is this?
I was thinking like you were thinking it was like their little telephone relay pods or pump house for municipal water system or sewage system, not that it's a label like it were to be. Things of that nature.
Yeah.
Cell towers, that's another beast.
Yeah.
Can we have one of those like at the end of Route, on Route 4, at the end of Freeman Hall? There's like a, no, it's fat, a utility structure. Freeman Hall on Route 4, there's a big one.
If it's too oddly specific, we can scratch it.
Let's scratch it.
Because some of those are probably going to be not mandated by us, but more by utility anyway, through our lease agreements I have with the town, the polls and stuff.
All right. Churches, synagogues, parishes, covenants, daycare, day nurseries, kindergartens and daycare centers. Yes.
Would suggest no in the residential ag district because these can get, you talk about, any of these, they can get pretty large in size and completely change a neighborhood. You have, say it's a kindergarten or daycare center, that's good. Serves 200 people or 400 people.
But the only other two options they would have is the commercial district or the downtown district.
Right.
So the only other place that a church, if a new church came in, could be up on Route 4 or in the downtown center.
Because that's, those are, those are commercial exposures. I mean, it's, it's not a residential or an agricultural use, it's a, those, any of those...
They require big parking lots?
Yeah, lots of lighting. It's, it's not a, I mean, there's small ones, obviously, but for any of these, you can get into, I mean, that's a, I would consider those commercial exposures. So it's not blocking any of these by any means, it would just push them to a further...
Even if we strike it out of there, it would still be something that if somebody had the room for it and wanted to put it there, they could go to the zoning board.
Right.
Yeah, it's going to require major planning anyway.
Right.
Yeah, I just, I'd be a little bit concerned because we are permitting, we're, we're saying these are permitted uses, where we have nothing that is a permitted use right now, or this is a permitted uses and we have some of those within the residential agricultural zone. So those are now going to be non-permitted uses. So they're going to be non-conforming to our zoning. Is that what we're wanting to do from now on?
So we'd have to include language in there about, unless they were in existence prior to the adoption of this amendment? That's what we do in other zones.
What, what happens when one of these want to make an alteration or have to put an ADA ramp in? You know, is that requiring them now to bring the whole building up to conformance? I don't know. Would that happen? Could that happen?
Not for like something like maintenance-wise, but a, perhaps a complete remodel or an addition, yes. But not like an ADA ramp or something like that or, you know, where rewiring, where maintenance, I would say no. A complete remodel, possibly. We would be, what would happen is we would be in our office scrambling, trying to determine what you were thinking, because it wouldn't be clear.
Or if we need to have a site plan for it, depending on the size of the, if it's an expansion, obviously. We did that for, even currently, I remember we had a case for, for, we'll just structure in a commercial zone that was expanding and they had come here for a site plan review because of, because of the change.
Steph, for Jen, if we have something that's permitted, I see in other zoning ordinances that they have non-permitted uses. If we're silent on that non-permitted use, what does that, or what does the non-permitted use allow for the zoning board? That, that can't be done?
Nothing really. And when you list out your permitted uses, you're saying these are the uses that are permitted. If it's not on the list, it's not permitted. So then to have a separate section of non-permitted uses?
I've seen that, that's all, I just didn't know if it's any other strength in one way or the other.
Oh, but doing it, instead of doing permitted, if you did non-permitted, that's, that's a bad idea because then, then you're permitting everything except for the non-permitted shortlist.
Right.
Okay, what's the consensus on the churches, synagogues?
What if somebody has a barn and wants to convert it into a house of worship? It's not changing the rural feeling, except for maybe extra parking.
Change of use though, right?
I mean, that's going to change, I would consider that change of a, the extra parking and extra neighborhood traffic that's going to generate, again, this is a residential
So just the activity itself rather than the structures involved?
I mean, I don't necessarily, it's not, not like we're seeing a huge surge of this right now, but just in general, like, you know, if it show up next to me, I'd consider it a commercial exposure.
So I have a concern about, you know, adding to an exist, you know, one of the existing churches in town, let's say. So currently, as we are right now, the church wants to put an addition on, what's going to happen? Is it going to be considered added use and going to be, have to look, be looked at as commercial? Because if that's the case, then there's really not, we're not changing anything by not, not allowing it. But if it's currently, a church can say, "We want to put an addition on," and it's just a matter of getting a permit for it without going through, you know, in front of the planning board, et cetera.
I guess maybe that's a good question for Dale. If you're thinking about, if you see an application for an addition to a church and it's, it's not listed in this permitted use, would you then say it goes to the zoning board?
Again, if you look at my list, one of the things that I asked you to talk about tonight is minor versus major and where, that's one of the things that we're struggling with. If somebody's putting an addition on, my gut instinct would want to be able to say, "No, it wouldn't have to go to the ZBA," but that doesn't mean we would automatically look at it. I mean, are we going to limit somebody from, whatever the reason is, are they expanding? Are they adding, you know, storage? Are they, it's, it's a tough call and that's why we're kind of asking... Are they expanding? Are they adding, you know, storage? Are they, it's, it's a tough call and that's why we're kind of asking minor versus major to be looked at, too. Is it new? Obviously something new regardless of what it is. It could be a little, you know, mom and pop convenience store would have to. But are we going to deny somebody from remodeling and coming up to today's standards on certain things that, that? To be honest, I don't have an answer for you right now. That would be a tough one that we would struggle with.
So for me, I guess the way I look at it is, you know, no matter what the scenario is, if it's a non-residential structure that's being expanded, you know, what's the expansion for? Is it just storage? There's really no impact to, there's not going to be any, say, additional foot traffic, vehicle traffic, all that kind of thing? Or is it for space for events and things like that, which could then, you know?
Exactly. But then, but one of the things we've got to be very careful about, and that's your thinking with common sense, and that's how I'm trying to look at it, too. But at the same time, we have to treat everybody the same. And without getting into names, is a church around that we just recently went through and was looking at? A daycare wanted to go in the church, so it was already existing. But did it meet the standards, today's fire safety standards? So they may have to do some things for us that we want them to do to make this daycare work. Not that we want the daycare, we don't care either way. I don't mean it that way. But if the daycare is going to go in, this is what we're telling you you have to do. Then are we going to turn around and say, but we're not going to let you do it? That's the problem that we have. So if there's a minor expansion, you know, versus like you say, if they want to add another room so they could put 30 new kids in there or 30 new parishes, you know, something like that, that obviously wouldn't be. Where do we draw the line? I don't, I don't have that answer. That's what we're looking for.
Well, with the daycare thing, I know that's been a common thing recently in, in the state, and I know there's been recent court cases involving, you know. Same thing with like, I think, church and dorm renting out their parking lot spaces, you know, how does that work? And does that consider part of the church services or not?
Yep. That's where we get into site plans, though, looking at saying, what are your operational hours? You know, the church could be.
Sorry.
Now go.
I would say I can put a change of use conversation and the minor versus the major is a site plan regulation provision as opposed to a zoning ordinance provision. So that's where you would capture that distinction.
And I think that's what we did in that other example I was remembering where there was an expansion and I think it was a site plan.
Can you say that again?
So change of use?
Mm-hmm.
For non-residential or multifamily? Would be a site plan provision, not a zoning ordinance provision.
Okay. Good.
And I will say it's a tough one that a lot of communities grapple with because you can have a change of use where there's, it is truly a change of use. But in terms of the intensity of the use, what is seen on the outside of the building, there's no change. And so it's how do you create a de minimis threshold that saves folks from having to go through that site plan review process? Versus just say you're good, go to building.
Yeah. I'm sure that there's many, many, many changes of uses that happen without any, any government notice. All right, so where do we stand? We just going to scratch off churches and all of that?
I think we're going to scratch off all of the last four, K, L, M and N, because they're all in the same vein. They're all kind of outside of the whole idea of residential agricultural. And they should, any of them should go before the ZBA if they're going to build in the residential area.
Yeah, to that point, if those are in high demand, we probably need to look at our zoning maps and rethink what we're doing with that as opposed to the uses for the residential.
So if you're going to take away, let's talk about ourselves. If you're going to take and belay municipal, not say a whole new highway garage, but they want to put up, you know, a shed, a sand shed, something like that, does that mean that I'm going to deny them?
No.
Because governmental land uses are exact.
My point, that's where I'm going with it.
By state statute.
Exactly.
So, so we'd have to scratch.
But we don't need them.
Municipal buildings.
So it doesn't need to be in there?
Right.
Gotcha.
But schools?
Government building?
Well, not all schools are government.
And private schools?
Again, I see that as a commercial exposure, so I think they should have to go through a more rigorous process to get approval. Or should we rezone?
Anybody have an issue with scratching off L, M and N?
N won't affect marked and property, right?
Nope. That's, again, municipal.
Yeah.
Can we have a discussion about tiny homes? Does that kind of go on there or not? Are we there?
I think we were waiting.
But is it that part of?
Language from the state subcommittee or wherever they have on those in their state committee on a legislative committee to study the tiny homes. And I think we were kind of waiting on direction from that.
So in the meantime, do I approve them or not? What do I do? I know a lot of communities are struggling with this both ways.
I don't think it would qualify under all, any of the current categories, single family.
The problem is, is they, that community would argue that it does. They would argue that it's a single family home. Is it a recreational? Is it on a, you know, that, we are not the first. I mean, there are communities all over. This is becoming a bigger and bigger issue, and it has come to us already. No one has applied, but I've had two people since I've been here asking me if we allow them or not.
Are they, so my question would be, are they permanent? Are they temporary? Are they on, so they kind of go back to like a manufactured home. Are they on, are they permanently connected to utilities and on a foundation? Or are they on a trailer that's meant to be moved and then therefore they become more of a, a temporary living quarters, which I don't know if we have to specify it as tiny homes in that, too.
Not to mention the issue of SEPT that comes up, that a lot of this community wants to have like composting, you know, SEPT and things like that, which in my opinion, that's where we draw the line. But what do I have to say? Yes or no? Is it? What, what would your, without even like committing on paper, what would, what would the planning board see this as? Is it a home or is it not? Is it just what you're saying, if it's on a foundation?
I'd see if it's permanently connected to utilities and water and, and sewage disposal facilities. That would be considered, you'd consider a single family home, but then you're going to have the code.
The problem with that is then we get into, as far as what my regulations, if I'm using the IBC or wherever I'm going, residential code is, does it have the insulation, which these do not? Does it have, you know, the heating? Does it have that? So that's part of the problem is even if it is on a foundation, it doesn't necessarily meet the building code. If you were to build a structure that way and from scratch, I wouldn't allow it. So it's something.
But would it fall under temporary housing?
Well, temporary housing, we've already resolved that.
So that's where I think it should be.
Yeah, but if we, even if we said tiny homes are permitted, it's still, we're not going to, it's still not overriding code. Nothing we do here can, you know, overrides the, the code side of things, the life and safety side. I don't think, not in my opinion, that's definitely not my intent is to ever override, override that side. I see the dilemma, and I think we're trying to get some.
Yeah, I don't know that we've got an answer definitively. You know, we're, we're certainly considering it. I just don't know all of the information yet.
As of today, we're not going to put it on permitted use, though.
Correct.
Right. That's all I need to know.
Something briefly. Over at Deerfield Fair two years ago, there was a person who lives in Lee that was, had, had two years of permitting to get through the community. And he has tiny homes for homeless vets, and he had one on display. So if you just call up the town of Lee and see how that has progressed with them, that would be a source of information for all of us, really.
I know one of the OEP conferences a number of years ago, too, they talked about, there was a presentation about like cottage situations. So like, this was after, I think, Irene, Hurricane Irene that took out a lot of homes that were in floodplains or ended up being in a floodplain. And instead of replacing them with, with like, which because they were inefficient and they depreciated and everything else. So they were trying to create like these small communities instead of one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, little tiny cottages that were highly efficient and, and everything. I don't know if any of them were to that degree of, of tiny home, you know, three and a square feet or less, or I don't know what, where that falls now. But I haven't seen anything happen with it either. But we did have that on our list for continuing into the future, too. So it's not, we didn't kick, we didn't scratch it off. We just had it as a.
So right now, we're not going to add it as a permitted use.
Good.
It's not saying it's not permitted, but they'd have to go to ZBA. Does that cover all of what we wanted, Steph?
Unless there's anything that you didn't see on this list that you think should be added.
It was just multifamily that caught my eye or didn't catch my eye earlier.
And then the only other thing we might want to consider, so in the other two zones, we have, you know, outlined for special exceptions. I was just trying to read that and see if.
Other uses by special exception from the Board of Adjustment utilizing the following special exception criteria.
Town center and the commercial industrial, someone used the same, the same language there. Similar language.
Well, it'll have to say other uses by special exception because that's what the zoning will provide them.
Yeah, then we have to, then we have to set the criteria. Because special exception is, is a lighter, easier process to get a special exception than it is to get a variance. So do we want to add special exceptions or do we want, if it's not this, is it? Oh, Jen, I'm sorry.
Do we, it would, you guys recommend adding special exceptions to this, or?
I would say for the residential district, it's less common to have uses by special exception. Generally, the special exceptions are things that require a bit more scrutiny, so it's more common to your commercial industrial zones where you might allow something that is a greater intensity or potential for harm or negative impacts to a butter. So in those districts, it's more common, less so in residential district. But I had my hand up, kind of heading back to the multifamily as a permitted use. And this is kind of a, throwing an additional item onto the list of things that might be a bit more urgent to address this year. And the way your multifamily development piece is structured is just kind of a standalone saying, okay, if you are doing multifamily, here are the additional provisions you need to comply with. And then where you can do it is based upon those districts and those lists of permitted uses. State statute defines multifamily as five units or more. In your two districts where you've allowed multifamily now, with the residential district and then the town center district, it's four units or less.
Yeah, because it says multifamily, four units or less.
Right.
So if the state doesn't define multifamily, other, higher than five, then we're calling it the incorrect term.
No, because three and four units is multifamily. But to comply with the workforce housing law, you need to somewhere in town allow five units or more, or at least five units. So if most communities go with like six, if they're going to limit. So it's, there's that question. So I think part of what happened is last year when the residential line was removed from the commercial district, that's where it had the unrestricted multifamily density. So you lost that one place in town where you met workforce housing law for the multifamily provisions.
Thought we had it. That's what I was looking for.
Is that a requirement or a benefit or what?
It's a requirement. So in here, it says multifamily for the purpose of workforce housing development means the building or structure contains five or more dwelling units.
I think we had discussed, when we talked about the rezoning, I think we discussed still being open to having like.
It's just a worksite.
Apartments or?
I thought we did have, still have that in the commercial.
I thought so, too.
So we, do we have, do you have our zoning called up? Do we have the word workforce in there anymore? Besides, and. I don't think we have it in definition. Yeah, we do.
Workforce housing.
We have it as, as part of the open space development?
Yep.
So I think we still do have it potentially.
So by definition, workforce is a price, is a price point.
Yep.
As opposed to a use. So you've got to think about the two separately. So workforce is, is, like, when you're saying workforce housing, you're saying the price point at which that housing sells. It doesn't say whether it's single family, two family or multifamily. And there are different price points depending on whether it is single family or multifamily in statute.
And the state is, has this requirement for multifamily, five plus?
Five plus somewhere in the community.
Does that price change every year? Is they, do they reevaluate that or re?
The price is based upon area median income.
Okay.
And that's set by HUD.
Yep.
So I see, the only suggestion I'm making now is just to say that somewhere you need to allow multifamily of five or more dwelling units. You can say up to six, that's fine. It's got to be five or more, allows.
Well, can't we do that in the multifamily that we have under the residential agricultural?
You could do it there, or you could say, the reason I just raise it is because you might want to think about where the most appropriate location would be to have a greater number of units. You might say that in the residential agricultural, you want to keep it smaller scale, you want to keep it lower density. So maybe it's more appropriate for the town center district. Or maybe it's more appropriate to just add back to commercial multifamily, but only multifamily, not single family or two family. You have different options. So it was more just thinking about it in context of, one, meeting state statute, but two, where is it most appropriate to do so?
You can't say commercial multifamily workforce housing. You'd have to just say multifamily. For the, like, if we added it back into the commercial, you can't say multifamily workforce housing.
No, you wouldn't, I wouldn't specify multifi, I wouldn't specify workforce attached with the multifamily. I would just say multifamily and let the market dictate what price point it sells at.
I don't, I don't think we ought to move residential back into commercial. We just got done taking it out of there.
Yeah, I think commercials were.
I think we're looking for a tax base up there, not.
I think, I think we ought to put it in the, I think we, if it's required by law, it ought to go under the residential use.
Yeah, because I just, so we do, we do have workforce specified in, as a, as a permitted use in open space developments, but we don't specify the number of units. There's bonus density and everything like that, but it doesn't say like.
Right.
So that's where we get stuck. So could we add it there and be?
I'd say you need it in the district. One of the districts should say.
Can it be a minimum lot size, like open space associated with this? Can you say?
You already have that in your multifamily piece. You've got a bumped up lot size.
But that's for four units. If we're going up to five, can we increase the lot size? So you could put it almost anywhere, but say you need this much space, which is going to limit it anyways.
So right now, and that's one of the things we've had come before us for people that do want to do like multifamily duplexes, because it's like two acres per unit. So you start getting into, it's basically individual house, well, slots.
Well, sizing.
So I don't know if, if that would be allowing it, but then making it overly restricted.
Yeah, the irony is that lot size, the way prices are right now, like, at least we're creating the opportunity, but I don't think we'd ever actually be able to get there.
Unless you get in someone that does one as the, in the open space, because then they get the density bonus.
Right.
I think you're okay with what, the way you have it currently phrased in the multifamily district is that you need to have six acres. Two acres for dwelling, for instance. The minimum land area for a multifamily complex shall be six acres of. minimum land area for a multifamily double, uh, complex shall be six acres of two acres per dwelling unit. So basically, it's two acres per dwelling unit. So if you say five units or six units, they need...
Ten or twelve.
Ten acres or twelve acres. So it's already structured so that it's incrementally tied to the number of units.
Yeah. So that's, that's the multifamily in our, uh, permitted use in residential agricultural? I mean, it will be, right?
Right. So instead of saying multifamily not to exceed four units, do you want to say multifamily not to exceed, or just multifamily? So I would say, if you're going to use the residential agricultural district to meet your state statute requirement, you'd need to add a minimum, say, multifamily not to exceed five units to comply. Um, things are usually built in even numbers, so you might write, uh, multifamily not to exceed six. Um, or you can just say multifamily and not specify the number. They'll still have to meet the two acres per unit requirement for minimum lot size.
What's the RSA for the, that definition, though?
Uh, six seventy-four fifty-eight. Going to... That's the definition, but then you have to go to six seventy-four fifty-nine for the mandate to have multifamily.
It's obviously a fine balance, because, you know, we want to, be able to allow room for everybody in the, in the community in, uh, in all stages, but you have to be balanced with, um, you know, if these are moving into like a residential area, that's all single family homes, and all of a sudden you have, if you don't cap it, you know, a large development that, that is much different than, than the, uh, the surrounding neighborhood. I know you have to be watch out for the, the NIMBY thing, too.
Well, let, let's face it. Nobody's going to build workforce housing on two acre lots. It's not going to meet the price point.
Right.
But we can allow it and meet, and meet the spirit of the law. Where they're actually going to build them is in a, uh, conservation sub, what do you call those?
Open space.
Open space.
Open space subdivision. That's where they're more likely to be built.
And that's what I was saying, because we allow it, and that, we allow it, and they get a incentive for it, they get a bonus of lots, but that actually is encouraging it.
Is that one by Demond on two acres per unit piece? Isn't that five units?
Yeah, but that's, that's a reader, that's not...
Oh, it doesn't count.
That didn't come through here either.
So there's one section that says municipalities, existing housing stocks shall be taken into consideration in determining its compliance with the section referring to the workforce housing. Um, we do have the multifamily dwelling conversions, which will allow up to eight units. I'm not saying that that satisfies everything, but does that.
I think we wanted to revisit that multifamily conversion, right?
Yeah.
Yep. So basically, to make sure we comply with the law, the quickest thing is to say, to change it to five units, no more than five units.
Or six units.
Or six. Five is the, the spirit of the law, six is more likely, because it's a, like you said, an even number, which is more likely what they ask for.
Okay, so we can just build that into our multifamily definition, right? So multifamily still be...
Yeah, your multifamily ordinance wouldn't change. It's just within one of your districts, because multifamily's not a district. Those are additional provisions that would be applied to multifamily development regardless of what district it's in. Um, so it's essentially written like an overlay and is applied like an overlay. Um, same with open space.
So, but all we have to do is, is add it into this, uh, section of permitted uses.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes. So what you've already done. So it's, it's just kind of taking that agriculture, that residential agricultural district and making sure that the list of permitted uses also checks the other box.
Yeah, we'll just have to drill down into the multifamily definition.
Right.
Yep. And that's still allowing it in town center, but town center, we're still, we're striking it for.
That's fine, you can do that. As long as somewhere you're allowed five or more.
Right, so it's either put multifamily in both zones and then go to the multifamily section and specify four, five, six, whatever. Okay, got it.
Okay, can we move to another topic?
Thank you, sorry.
Um, no, it's all important stuff. Which, does that cover all of warrant, Article Three? I see some other red here, but...
We want to deal with, um, maybe frontage and setbacks pulled in from the different municipalities around. Have a discussion.
Length of frontage and lot size seem like we're way in the mix with our surrounding towns and the front setback. Uh-huh. We're not off the chart here.
But if we move it to fif, if we move it to forty rather than fifty, it gives them a bigger backyard, and it really doesn't make that much difference in appearance. And then twenty feet for town center would make it more of a community field.
Yeah, I've seen it, I've seen that argued for the town centers, especially if you're trying to encourage, you know, like, say, your mixed-use, commercial industrial, uh, commercial residential kind of things, where it makes sense to actually have them come closer to make it look like a, like a, like a downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Or for someone that has an old house that's near a road and it's not even a very busy road in town, it's, uh, I can tell you, the neighbors I have that have the houses further back are, are much happier in general.
And sustain intact, too.
And sustain intact, yeah.
So what is the action we're doing here? We're, we're just reviewing the setbacks relative to the chart that you put in?
We'd asked for, uh, so the chart is what our current is, that, and we'd asked, uh, for Steph to compile, like, what our, some of the surrounding towns do, so we can't see if we're, like, with any of our other zoning stuff, where we are compared to our neighbors.
I'm just a little confused on what we have. We put side, we don't really call them side setbacks, do we?
Yeah, it's a conforming law, it's just fifty feet.
If it's for the, for the structure itself, it's fifty feet.
For the main structure, for the main house, not for accessory buildings.
It's fifty feet regardless.
Yeah.
No side, front, rear.
For the, for the home, yep. And then they get less for other structures, accessory structures.
So then the question is, do we want to reduce the side and the rear and/or the front?
Yep. I want four, I recommend forty, thirty, thirty for agricultural, residential, and twenty, twenty, twenty for town center, front, side, and rear.
So I'd say we got to be, we should consider this for, so we're not just impacting current lots, this would be, potentially change and allow a lot more lots in, on, on major subdivisions.
Not if they have to have two acres.
Not if they have what?
Not if they have to have two acres. That doesn't change.
Sure.
But the setbacks would change for the main dwelling.
Right, but the placement of the, of the dwelling, the way we have it now, is that, um, it can, it could change the, the makeup of that, make the...
I mean, the buildable area?
Mm-hmm.
Question comes up then, too, for looking at setbacks, say, in the town center area, are we also going to be looking at frontage or not?
Do we not have a frontage requirement for town center?
It's two hundred.
It's two hundred, everything's two hundred.
Yeah. One fifty, I thought, would be better, you know, for more intimacy in town. But still, lot size will not change, just...
I think we're getting into some heavier...
Want to save it for later?
I'm, I'm not trying to shut it down, I just think we're starting to get into much heavier, uh, changes than...
Well, the, the other thing you got to add to this is that the, uh, open space setbacks are now going to be more restrictive than, uh, the setbacks that we're talking about putting in right now.
Visit those two.
We're going, if we're going to be changing setbacks, we've got to work at all of them.
So maybe we've crossed the line of substantive changes.
Could be.
We'll say that, should we, should we rein it back to ones that...
So just remember, we, this is just for residential agricultural district, district for warrant Article Three. If you want to start talking frontages, then we should move on to the frontage section. But I don't think we should be talking about changing setbacks in a different district if we want to focus on finishing up this district.
Okay, so let's finish, let's focus on finishing up this district. Is that correct? Will that help?
Yes.
I will say that there are a lot of denials on side setbacks. Again, whether it's even residential or accessory primary, um, I don't feel as strongly as I do about the septic, but I would like to see it reduced somewhat. I, I think fifty feet for a side setback is very strict.
Where is it fifty feet for a side setback?
For this, for the dwelling. For the dwelling specifically. So that gives you, say, at minimum a hundred feet between houses, neighbors, uh, especially in a new subdivision, where if you reduce it...
And ironically, what I'm finding is a large portion, if not the majority, of our lots are actually, whether we call them, I hate the word grandfathered, but whether we call it that, pre-existing, non-conforming. So we're reducing them down anyways for all of these lots. So the people that come in with two acres like they're supposed to have a much stricter than these little tiny lots, and it's easier to get something built on an undersized lot than it is a bigger one. And it's kind of, I think it defeats the intent of what the ordinance was set for in the first place. If I come in with two acres and I'm going to be, I don't want to say I'm going to be punished, but it's going to be much more difficult for me than if I didn't have two acres.
You're more apt to buy a...
And then we're putting up bigger houses on these tiny lots that, you know, it, it's almost like you're being punished for meeting the spirit of the ordinance.
If only we could do retroactive planning and go back and put it all in a, you know, best practices kind of thing, but it's a tough thing.
Okay, so can we maybe just process some elimination here? So the, the property line, between property line and water's edge and any dwelling, pre-existing, so between the property line and dwelling, that's everything. That's what's saying is the fifty.
Right, so that, that's just taking the, the verbiage that was above and turning it to chart form without any changes to, to it.
So we were okay with reducing septics to twenty?
That was a legit change.
So, so I'm a little confused, though. I thought shoreline always required fifty-foot setbacks from, uh, water, water's edge.
Regardless of what we do, if it's by the water, they're still going to have to get a shoreline permit and meet that. So we could say, you could break it out and, and have a separate line for water or not, because they're still going to have to go to the state, and they're not going to get it anyways.
I would say just strike the, or water's edge, um, because exactly what Dale said, they're going to have to get a shoreline permit.
And they're going to be stricter than we.
Does shoreline permit come into, come into play only with lakes and ponds and rivers?
No, wetlands. I mean, there's different standards.
Not well.
What's that?
Not necessarily well.
Shoreline is, is open water.
Shoreline's open water, but i, if you're building a house in wetlands, you know, whether it's prime or whatever, they're different, there's different criteria. I mean, it could go up to two hundred fifty feet, but it, you know, they do look at that. The state does look at it.
That was my question with, when I was trying to figure out if we need to keep that language in there, is to how that was defined.
So I would agree with her that you just remove wetlands or water completely, and then it would be up to you to decide whether you wanted to just reduce the number or maybe add a different line, one for front, as you said, you want to protect the rural image, and then put a separate one for sides and back if you wanted to reduce it. That might be the simplest, cleanest way of doing it. Say fifty feet from the front, and then whatever number you come up with for the sides and rear. Because if you look at all the work that Jen did, I'm sorry, that Steph did, um...
Steph and Jen.
Steph and Jen. If you look at all the work they did, which, it's a tremendous asset, us having them, um, the nearest community is thirty-seven is the highest, and we're at fifty. It's just, it really is, again, it goes to the ZBA and the majority of time, they're getting it.
But if we're going to change this, I mean, the chart in the, uh, open space says right at the top, residential agricultural dimensions. Isn't that going to be confusing to have that be different than the residential, uh, dimensions?
I don't think so, and correct me if I'm wrong, because when you go with open space because of lot size and other things, they're getting a benefit by having the open space design and different, but i, you're comparing apples to oranges. They may not have the lot size, so it's not about setbacks. We're giving them a smaller lot, more units or whatever, because now they're going to have this open space. So it's not really, you're comparing two different things. So the fact that you might have setbacks greater on one than the other, there could be benefits under them that they would just get regular.
Okay. And right now, in the open space, I don't think we even mentioned septic, I'd have to look at it. So if we, so right now, I think it's fifty feet even in open space, so the other things are less, but...
And the applicant would always have the option of coming in and looking at our regulations and say, this works better for me going this way, I'm not even going to go open space. We're not telling them what they have to do, it's up to them. They just may choose to go to open space to get certain benefits. That's up to them.
Okay. So the, so the question potentially now is, in the, in the chart version, potentially striking out that second section between all property lines, water's edge, and septic systems, instead, and just either strike it out entirely, um, or change it to twenty feet instead of fifty, or adding to the bottom two, um, and accessory buildings, including septics. That way, you still keep them fifty feet from the front, and then, but you give them less restriction on the size and rear. I don't know if that's what Dale...
I'm a little bit confused. Is this chart for number three for everything, or is this just for septic? Because it's kind of under, it's got that setback, oh, it says setback requirement, it's not what you're saying, so yes.
So basically, we took the existing language.
Yep.
Took it out of sentence and stuck it into a chart and changed absolutely nothing.
So, right, so my recommendation would be that you remove in that first line, you just remove water's edge.
Yep.
Get rid of that, and you can still keep it, um, and, and you change it to, if you want to keep the front as fifty, and then add a whole other separate line that says sides and rear would be thirty, twenty, whatever you come up with.
Add another column.
Yes. That would be my recommendation to you.
Or don't add a column, just get rid of that second row and add septic systems to, after accessory buildings. Because then you could still have fifty feet, if that's what...
Oh, yeah.
And then twenty feet on the sides and rear.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Doesn't make sense to me. I don't get it.
I got it.
You got it?
All right, so you want your septic systems to be twenty feet from any property line. You want your dwelling units or your primary structures to be at least fifty feet from the front lot line. What about the side and rear?
So...
At this time.
At this time.
Later discussion, remember you said, because I had suggested forty feet.
Right.
And so back talking about that.
But can we talk about it in the residential? I think it spilled over into the setbacks for all different districts. So if we wanted, it would help you if we defined what those setbacks are. Is that what you're looking for tonight?
Just for this district.
Yes, just for this district.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got, someone on the board has recommended something. Anybody else have other recommendations contrary or? So yours was kind of this forty, thirty, thirty, but we may just continue with the fifty?
Forty, thirty, thirty.
Okay, is it consensus that we would continue with the fifty-foot front setback? I'm not hearing yes or no.
So I.
I think so, I think we just need to kind of.
I'm okay with forty, thirty, thirty.
Think about it, actually, so how that changes lot dimensions.
But Dale brought up a point that for side setbacks, we're at fifty, and the next highest is thirty-seven in Deerfield. Everybody else is somewhere between thirty and twenty-five.
And if you have a non-conforming lot, the formula gets reduced down much more anyways.
Yeah.
I would ask you to consider thirty feet for side setbacks.
But again, we're not just, if we reduce it, it's not just for current conforming lots of two acres. It's changing it for all new.
For all.
Major subdivisions and everything else.
Right.
So I just.
Want to think about it some more? I mean, we can, we can move past that and just think about it a little bit more, how it affects the other pieces. So that's a little bit.
I can flag it for further discussion.
Yeah.
The next week.
We did all agree on the twenty feet for septic.
We did.
And the new format.
Yep.
All right, it's a start.
What are their pieces in the, this section? Should we give you answers on?
I mean, unless anybody has objections to the numbering.
No.
No, I did not.
Pretty straightforward. So other than the setback discussion, we're good with article three. Do we want to continue? What's the board's pleasure? Should we move on? Could we here, could just go through Dale's list, just since he's here. Sure. Yes. We already hit a lot of stuff. Do you want me to go through it or?
However you want it, your meeting.
I'll go through this, so reduce septic setbacks, we've covered that. Our two C, consider rewarding the entire section for clarity, we're doing that. Forty percent lot coverage may be extreme, most towns are thirty percent. Is that under, do we have that in C as well?
No, it's all somewhere else.
It's somewhere else.
I apologize if I put that in the wrong section.
That's okay.
No, I know we have it on our list too, somewhere.
Yeah, I know that's on the list.
It's not a high priority for me.
We could check it out. Oh, it's under.
Well, we can move on, we don't need to, we'll cover that. Consider reviewing side setbacks, we've done that. Temporary housing.
So this is a humongous one. I'm having a lot of issues right now. We have several, we have people living in campers, and it's a health hazard. It's a health hazard, they're just literally dumping sewage on the ground. And for me to go onto their property, they could just say no, and it's, there's a lot going into this. So the problem with living in a camper, there's multiple problems. One is you have the health hazard, and what our ordinance says is it's not designed as permanent primary occupancy, it's temporary. Well, I go up to them and I say, you can't live here. Well, this is temporary, I'm having problems in life, it's been two years, but it's temporary. And I have nothing that I, there's nothing from our town that says this is what we need to enforce. What I'm asking is, initially I was asking six months, and Steph and I had a lot of conversations, she had some great points, that we came up with four months with a possibility of two extensions. The reason why, I know you guys initially said thirty or sixty days, but somebody's gonna live in a camper for one of two reasons. They're building a house, valid reasons, they want to build a house, nobody builds a house in sixty days. So they want to build a house who would live there while they're doing it, giving them four months or even six months is not unrealistic. The other thing we have is people have lots, we have a lot of water property, where people want to use their lots, but they don't have a house. So they're gonna put a camper there and they're gonna put their sewage wherever their gray water, even if it's not sewage, they're gonna put their gray water that's running into our lakes. I have no way of enforcing this. To say that it's only going to be sixty days a seasonal camping permit, they're just not gonna come to us. But if we give something realistic, where if they come in April and then we say, okay, you have to be out of there by August, it's fair, it's reasonable, and people will apply for permits, and then we can control the waste products and we can control, you know, all kinds of things. Having something in ordinance that people can achieve, they'll play by the rules. If they can't achieve it, they're gonna do what they want. So a seasonal camping permit would allow us to give some flexibility.
I think it's a good idea, and I think that obviously doesn't make, we don't want to make it overly burdensome on staff here either.
Yep.
Of, you know, you're coming to review these every thirty days.
The reality is, if somebody had to come in and fill out a seasonal camping permit for me, it's gonna take me fifteen minutes versus literally weeks and months and months of chasing people down and trying to work and negotiate with them. So it won't be over burdensome, it's gonna actually reduce the work. The downside is that you have people struggling out there that are living in campers. We're going to say no, you know, but it's for health reasons, it's not for health, it's for life safety.
So my question is, so since many of them are struggling, are we gonna, you know, they're gonna have to pay for this permit? That could be, you know, detrimental to them.
A permit, the town that I came from next door, I don't remember exactly what it was, but I believe a permit was twenty-five dollars. It's not going to make a difference. What's gonna make a difference is, and this is the reason we're doing it, because then I'm gonna come in and I'm gonna say, either show me a septic system that you're tied into, or we'll work with people and say, okay, you don't have to put in a septic system to go camping, but you're gonna show me a contract, this is one of the things that would be on the checklist, that says somebody's gonna come in and pump your trailer out every month, every three weeks. And we're gonna follow up on it to make sure that you're not dumping raw sewage into our lakes. That's where the cost would increase, but these are things that have to happen.
True.
And it's gonna cost people more money, but we're gonna be protecting the community as a whole.
Or they're doing it already and it's not gonna cost them any, actually, because they're doing it the way it's supposed to be done. It's gonna cost people more money that are currently skirting that.
Okay, I think it's, you know, that's something.
Steph, is this your wording?
So it's the Deerfield wording and then adapted for the discussions that we've had.
The only thing, I like the whole idea of this, the only thing I find a problem with is, if you read it from top to bottom, it never says that you need to get a permit to get started, it only says you have to get a permit to extend.
Yep, and that was one of my questions, do you want a permit right off the bat or is?
Yes.
Okay.
I've talked with the town administrator, and typically what it's done is, in other towns, the selectmen have to sign off on this. But what we would do here, the same thing, trying to make it less burdensome on the people, is they would extend and give me the authority to be their representative, so somebody could just come in and get a seasonal camping permit with, through me. But I would be acting on behalf of the selectmen when we do that.
But we need to spell out that they need to get a permit to get started.
Yep. It wasn't spelled out in Deerfield, so I didn't want to add it without chatting with you guys first. And then going off of that, I'm assuming it's the property owner that would be applying for this permit?
Or they give a letter to authorizing, you know, like that these people are allowed to do that. But yes, it would be the same thing.
Okay.
You know, somebody can't just file, you know, a renter can't ask for a building permit.
When we talk about placements, a placement of recreational vehicles shall comply with the current setback requirements, do we have to specify dwelling? Like dwelling, so that, or are we discounting this as for that intent and purpose to be considered?
I don't understand your question, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, so we have, in the proposed language, placement of the recreation vehicle shall comply with the current setback requirements of the district where it's located? So do we need to specify?
I would consider, if I were to read that, that would be an accessory structure, not a primary resident, so it would fall under the setbacks for an accessory. You can't put it right on your neighbor's property.
Right, I guess that's, so I was interpreting it as dwelling.
Unless it's a tiny home that we're not talking about.
Well, you know, it's, most of these locations are probably non-conforming lot sizes already.
If we're doing the camping thing, yes, it's people on the water. If we're doing, and I don't want to be too burdensome, because let's say somebody's building a house. We don't want to tell them that they have to meet our setbacks and be fifty feet away, right where the person wants to put their foundation. We're trying to work with people and say, okay, you can live in your camper, if you have to meet all the setbacks, it's right where the house is gonna go and it defeats the whole purpose. Usually neighbors don't mind short term, and I think that's something that we could kind of be vague on and handle case by case.
Does this cover the scenario of, say, people are coming in from out of state or long-term visitors, grandparents that may come to a house and have a camper and they're living in the camper for the summer? And would that be considered similar? I know that happens a lot.
It's, if somebody were to come, if you were to ask me, I would say, yes, you have to file a seasonal permit if your grandpa, if your parents are gonna live there for six months. But if it's in somebody's driveway, I'm not gonna go, it's a temporary thing. Again, the reason why we want to do this is because where is the sewage going? And there are life safety issues, we don't want somebody that's going to be living in a camper beyond that, you know. It may not be your parents are visiting, it may be that your child is struggling in life or just gonna go let them live in the camper and six months becomes four years, and it's a life safety issue. So technically, yes, that would apply. If we're asking somebody to get a permit because their parents are up for two weeks, no, I'm not going to be doing that.
Or you see woodstoves go in and things like that, that these are not made for.
This isn't really designed for us to go out and look for problems, it's us for, when problems arise, we have a means to fix them. We're not looking to go out and look for every camper out there and say, it's, you know, the neighbor complains, they, you know, whatever the situation is, children in schools, I mean, and there are cases like that, that they don't have addresses and they're living in campers. And we recently went through one where it was a life safety issue that we were, our primary concern was that this child was living in a camper that was very rundown, and we didn't really have the means, we found other ways to protect this child. But this will be, you know, step one.
To get around the scenario that Dirk just mentioned, do you think it would make any sense to put some wording that said, you know, exceeding thirty days need a permit?
I think like Ed said earlier in reference to when we were talking about permitting, as soon as you start doing that, then we're opening up the door. I think we just leave it out and if it's not an issue, we're not going to be, it's not a high priority, it's when it becomes an issue. Most people, that if it's in their driveway and they have relatives there, they're not pumping sewage onto their own lot. It's when they're out in the woods and they don't care. So that's really not a concern, I would just, I would deal with it case by case.
When we get into the occupation of recreational vehicles and not to exceed a period of six months within a twelve-month period, since that's in like the body there of where we're talking about a vehicle, and later on we specify no more than one may be used at a time. Is that a loophole, do we need to kind of close that where they say, well, that one's removed, now I can bring this other one on and?
I think we could fight that.
I think that.
It solves a loophole, you're right though.
I think the town of Conway has language around that. They have like a one hundred and eighty-day timeframe if I remember correctly, and it's for the lot. The lot usually have a recreational vehicle.
Is that something we could change, Steph, that just says, good point?
Makes sense.
Yep.
Okay, let's keep on moving, I'd like to not go past nine o'clock, if that's okay.
Yep.
So clearly define impact fees.
So this one can just be resolved in the housekeeping. One of the loopholes that I find, it's funny that you just brought up loopholes, is the way that the ordinance reads right now. It says if you have a subdivision, you have five years. My interpretation of that is the intent was that, when this was written a long time ago, it was saying, okay, we're giving everybody five years because it's something new. The way it actually reads though, if somebody puts in a new subdivision right now, they can say, I'm not paying you for five years. I would just like it to change to, as of, get rid of the five-year thing completely and just put in whatever that five-year date was. You know, so we go back to when the ordinance, the impact fees was originally passed, we add five years and we say, as of this date, you know, you're paying impact fees, it's just a loophole that people can exploit.
We talked about cleaning that up when we had a waiver request, because it's beyond the point now where that language was even valid, like you said. So we talked about trying to get that out of there and just.
Basically, anybody that comes in right now is getting the impact fee. But a good lawyer, a new subdivision can come in, they could, they could beat us on this, so I'm just asking for that to be cleaned up.
Clarifying minor versus major, I think we all know that this has been an issue. So we have to do better at defining these in not only, you know, uses, but site plan, what's kicking these site plans into a major and minor.
And I would ask that when you look at it, whatever you come up with, it's not clear, and this was really coming from Joanna, she had some good points on this. What do we authorize to do and the staff, what do we authorize to sign off on and not? And it was an issue with that daycare that came in, home occupancy. We didn't even know whether we could give permits, not, we, you know, it was just so convoluted. We would just like to have it cleaned up as, what are we, the staff, supposed to do with whatever you decide? If you can just address that, whatever you come up with, we don't care, we're just looking for direction.
Remove grandfather and replace with pre-existing.
That's been done, yep.
That's our.
Identify what lot of record exempts from an application.
So so many people come in and they, it's the same thing with the term grandfathering, this is just another thing, there's a lot of record. I'm allowed to do whatever I want, you know, and it's, we face this every day, it's not, it doesn't really specify, does a lot of record get you out of six seventy-four, does it get you, you know, out of current setbacks? There's, it's just thrown at us, it's a loophole that people throw at us all the time. And what is a lot of record? He's one of them.
So what you're looking for is a clearer definition of what a lot of record is?
And do we tackle that with, by changing, so we have pre-existing, so we have pre-existing non-conforming, and we have non-conforming, and that's it, so we're not.
But what does that mean?
Well, pre-existing non-conforming, we have under two acres.
Well, it's prior to when the zoning regulation went into effect.
So prior to ninety-three.
And we have definition around what would.
Pre-existing non-conforming, but we don't have anything about pre-existing. Pre-existing, non-conforming, but we don't have anything about pre-existing conforming in a way, because they're pre-existing, they're conforming with lot size, two acres, but they're not conforming necessarily with setbacks. My house, for example.
More with road.
Or frontage, yeah.
And it is one that we do see, I mean, it ties in with all the other stuff we're talking about, it's just-
Yeah. So how do we move this one forward? Is it just a better definition, is it?
No.
No? That's fine, that's fine. I mean, there's a lot of legal things to this that we may not even be able to resolve in our own zonings.
Honestly, I would say that the more you try to carve out different caveats, the messier it's going to get and the harder it's going to be to administer. So you've got not, you know, your pre-existing non-conforming lots, so they don't have adequate frontage, they don't have adequate lot size, they don't meet current standards. Under current law, state law and, you know, state law and case law, they still have to comply with all existing town ordinances and regulations to get any approvals. There is a section in your zoning ordinance as is that says that if there will not be an impact of health, safety, wealth, or health, I think it's just health maybe, I don't know if it's provision off the top of my head, the building inspector can approve that building permit even though it may not comply. So it gives those pre-existing non-conforming lots that will out in that one spot. But if there's that question of, eh, I don't know, like the septic system, then it requires that additional review, it requires that variance. You should still put those things toward having a variance. Because when you adopt your policies for your community that says lots need to be two acres, lots need to have this much frontage, there should be a rationale behind the basis for which you've set those standards. Whether it's combination of character and then the health, safety, welfare, you've got a basis that you've established. And if a lot can't meet that standard, then they need to say, even if it's a pre-existing lot, then they need to say, okay, well, here's why you should let me do that. And they should come in and justify that, there should be a conversation with the town. You need to, you know, when we talk about roads and whether they have, you know, the question, and we haven't touched the frontage piece, and that one actually is a bigger can of worms, and Steph has done more research than I can imagine right now on road law. And so, you know, with your roads, you need to make sure that the town can get a fire truck down the road, an ambulance down the road, a police car down the road. And you shouldn't be permitting something on those roads unless you can provide those emergency services. Because you're saying, when you're permitting development in your community, you're saying, yep, go ahead and build there and I can provide these essential services to you. If you can't, you shouldn't be permitting development there, it's scattered and premature, it's unsafe. So there are some bases there that you want to be able to uphold, you want to have a conversation with those prospective applicants in a little bit more detail, you want them to prove that they can meet that health, safety, welfare standard. So I would say you don't want to start carving out these exemptions and caveats for your non-conforming lots of record.
So are you saying that what we've got now is what we should stick with?
Pretty much. Steph can do a little bit more detail in that conversation on the frontage piece.
Yeah, and then maybe we can just get you a good yes or no direction.
It would be something as simple as what you just said, even if it was in the infamous two C that said, you know, a pre-existing lot, lot of record may not get you any of this, because right now people are coming in, they say, I got a plat, it's a buildable lot, I can do what I want. And we're having this fight, we spend a considerable amount of time trying to explain what you just explained, and then we get into the, the arguments back and forth. It could be something just as simple as putting in here, a lot of record does not necessarily get you, whatever you want to say, anything, we don't have to get into technical stuff, but right now, and unfortunately, we also have a history going back of years of saying, oh, you had a lot of record, do what you want. That's a lot of, you know, so I'm trying to straighten it out. I need something, and, and I understand what you're saying, that we don't want to get too strict or anything, but, but I need something in there saying, that I can point to the people and say, you have to meet these things. It could be very vague, but we need something.
Have you tried the asbestos argument? It used to be okay, but-
Well, the bottom line is, they have to meet your zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
So you have one C that talks about they're exempt from this, you know, from that section if they're a non-conforming lot prior to these passages, but then you get the two, C2, talking about, again, that's only if they're under two acres.
What does a plat get them out of? How does that play into it?
What does a plat get them out of?
A plat, what does that get them out of? If they had a, you know, a recorded plat going back 20 years and they're saying, well, this is a buildable lot, I've had this for 20 years.
Great. Does it predate the zoning ordinance or not?
Let's say it does.
It predates the zoning ordinance?
Then it's a non-conforming lot.
They're, they're not grandfathered.
Hmm. So if it predates it, you're saying they can do it?
No.
They still have to meet the zoning, the current zoning.
They still have to meet the current zoning, yeah, because if they came in with a subdivision application in 1980 and proposed something, and they proposed to create some lots and build on those lots, the town said to that applicant in 1980, sure, this meets the standards today, if you build on this today, you're fine, and then you would have had your grandfathering provision. So that if you didn't do something within whatever the grandfathering position, provision was in statute at that time, you're no longer vested, you're no longer protected, then you are, then you have to comply with whatever is in effect at the time that you do, you built. So there's, there are these kind of windows put in in state statute that say, you come in, you get approved, you've got so much time, if you don't take advantage of that-
You don't use it.
You don't lose it, you, yes, exactly, you don't use it, you lose it.
I agree with everything you're saying, 100%. The problem is we're having this fight every single time and nobody's interpreting it that way. Is there anything that we can do that says, a simple thing that just says-
Big sign all over.
No grandfathering, you know, in other words, basically it comes down to grandfathering. There is no such thing.
There is no grandfather, there is no such thing.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That doesn't stop us from having this-
I think us taking that word out entirely is, I think, the first step. So that, you say, where does it say grandfathered in here? It doesn't. Now it says non-conforming, pre-existing, so it's not even saying pre-existing necessarily except for one spot.
So if they had a plat and you said to them, all right, what, what's the date on that plat? Well, it expired.
The only thing that the plat is really getting them out of right now, when it comes down to it, and that's because of our policy, not because of law, is the selectments portion of 674. They still have to go to zoning, but we get out of the selectments portion of them signing off if it hasn't approved plat. That's what it gets them out of right now.
That's the building, sorry, just to fill in a gap, that's the building on a class six or private road.
All right, so if you guys don't see it, this needed them.
I think we do, we're just trying to make sure we-
No, I get it, I get it.
It's a bigger can of worms.
Yeah. We're hoping that taking grandfathered out will make it a little bit better.
We'll give it a shot for a year.
All right, so let's, let's close it out with these last two, at least this meeting. So add fences for the purpose of zoning enforcement. Do we determine that as a structure or do we determine this as something totally different? So fencing.
Problem with fencing is we don't have any-
How do we enforce fencing?
We don't right now, and other towns do. We don't, so if people want to put up a fence, we don't require a permit. And it doesn't sound like a big deal, except when you want to put it, you know, we're saying that you have to have all this rural character and safety and right of ways for snow plowing and stuff like that. Right now, anybody can put a fence right on their property line and the snowplows can't get to it, or it could be on an intersection and it's going to block, it's going to be a life safety issue because they're blocking the views. I have no way to enforcing fencing right now, so I would like to add that in somewhere and I don't know, where, where would we do that? Do we consider, obviously it's not going to be a structure, we're not going to tell somebody they're going to be 20 feet away, but we should have something that says, here's our rules for fencing. You know, you can't put it in a right of way, you can't, we, we do allow fencing right to a property line, you know, on side and whatever, you are allowed to do that, we recommend everybody go a foot off for maintenance and just because of the argument of neighbor between neighbor. But right now, I have no way of enforcing, and it happened down here on Stage Road where somebody put up a fence right on a corner. You know, so what do we do? The rock wall over on Mitchell, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, it looks beautiful, but it's kind of a problem. So I'd kind of like to see just something in there that says fencing requires a permit, doesn't have to be anything, but right now, we don't have anything for fencing.
Okay. And then add commercial sprinkler fire alarm.
That's something the fire department requested. We don't actually have anything, we have what the state does, but people can argue that all the time. Talking to the fire chief and the firefighters, and it came up with a recent issue, a commercial, I'm not going to say the name, but a commercial business is coming into town, they're dealing right now, we don't have authority to make them put in, in a place of assembly. So what we would like to see on commercial side, sprinkler and fire alarm.
There's nothing in the code already, because we, I think, we've defaulted a lot of times, I think we include some language on like residential side or whatever, you know, I think it goes to the fire chief and it's usually, because we can't require sprinklers on residential.
Right. Unless it's a subdivision. I mean a-
Multifamily.
Yeah.
But we can on commercial.
You can on commercial, and that's what we're asking for.
Thank you, Dale, that was a lot of good information.
Sorry for throwing all this stuff at you.
So we're going to have Steph come up with some, what other towns do on fencing, seeing as we have nothing to work on.
Next round. Yep.
Yeah. You don't have anything to work on?
No, I know she has plenty to work on.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to punt on the frontage stuff.
Can I just ask two questions?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
We can get into the nitty-gritty of it at the next meeting, but is there a definition from residential, agriculture, commercial, or multifamily that you guys like, that you would like me, like you see me apply to all four districts?
I liked Northwood's the best, but the only thing, I don't know if we need to add on anybody about either length on a common boundary and where that stems from, so like, you know, is it where the driveway goes in? That's your frontage?
Okay. What about within your own definitions?
Oh.
That I can just adapt to all of them? And then does the town center have something that you guys are going off of that's just not specified? Residential agriculture?
Yeah, I mean, it seems to be the most clearest.
Yep.
To me, that that could be applied to all of these.
That's the one I like too.
Sounds good.
Does that, the only thing with that, where we mentioned the backlot subdivision in accordance, that's what I was trying to look at.
So the backlot doesn't need to have 200 feet?
No, but I was trying to read the language in the backlot section to see if it, if by adding that, same language into commercial industrial, is that a, is that someone's loophole in saying, well, now I can do a backlot here and do residential? But it's not, because it says it-
They can't do residential.
With all other, both lots must comply with all other applicable zoning ordinance requirements, so I would say that's, that'd be a no, if I'm interpreting that right.
Okay, well, it sounds like, in the consensus is the residential one. The multifamily would be by itself, or are we trying to define one frontage?
It would just be a consistent definition across all four, so they would all still have their own definition, but it would, since it, there's no consistency across districts.
Oh, so you're saying, yeah, so 200 feet, 200 feet, 200 feet, 300 feet, but the same language would be, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Same wording. Town center, is that still 200 feet?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that then.
Yep.
As of now.
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure it doesn't, doesn't say.
Yep.
And you guys are happy with the 200 feet? Because I know that was a suggestion from Dale that we reduce it.
For where, the commercial area?
For everything, I believe.
No.
Not on frontage.
Not on frontage?
Yeah, not on frontage, I think we're consisting of 200. And I think with the town center, it, it kind of refers back to C2 or C1.
What was the second one? Second, second question you had?
The, the 200 feet.
Okay.
If you guys were happy with that.
I think that there was some mention in the chart that you did step, that I just suggested 150 in the town center.
Yeah, I did include it on this one, but 200 is right around what everyone else is doing.
Okay.
I think Northwood is 150.
So did we just finish that one? No punting. What else did you have?
The fat one. Oh, the fat one.
But do we actually define frontage?
Sorry?
In all that discussion now, do we actually define frontage?
It gives me enough to work with to put something in front of you guys next week or next meeting.
And the fat one is our homework?
Yep. So the one that was passed around during the meeting, that should include everything with any red edits. Please just go through and look and make sure that, you know, we didn't misinterpret any of the changes that you asked us to make.
We do.
It doesn't push one section into another. I'm pretty confident in it, but just want to make sure you guys go through and make sure there aren't any, aren't any issues. And if you have any comments, feel free to email me or bring them to the next meeting.
Right. Just because I had a couple, it doesn't mean anything.
That's it. I have a full copy here if you want that.
Right. And that's the, is that the same one that was online to download, or is that the, no, it's updated, updated?
This is the most updated.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can resend it to you guys, I guess.
Yeah, if you could just recirculate it as, as the document.
If I can just make one super quick item relative to the big fat section.
Yeah.
That's really just reformatting, like Steph said, and some slight renumbering, and then the definitions are mostly in alphabetical order now, there's still a few rogue definitions that are out of order. But Dale and I were just kind of quickly looking at section, Article Four, Section U nonconformance, and getting at that lot of record question, and we think it's a really quick administrative correction that we could do that help, would help there. So U1, nonconforming uses, says any nonconforming use existing on the effective date of these regulations. Then two is any, a nonconforming lot of record, but it doesn't have the date, it doesn't have that time reference. And so I think having that time reference would help solve that problem, and then it would say, which does not meet the requirements of the area of the town, you know, blah, 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 may be used for the purposes provided in the zoning district which the property is located if the code enforcement administrator determines that the use of the lot will not create potential health or safety problems due to inadequate areas, dah, 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 dah. So it's that, it's that squishy piece that you were talking about, it's already in here, but it, just by putting that date in there, it just clarifies. The 1993, the effective date of the ordinance. Yep.
1980.
That was my hypothetical.
Oh. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before.
Where else is 1990?
March 11th, 1980.
So it's just a taking language from the paragraph below and repeating it in the paragraph below. It doesn't change the meaning of it, it just clarifies the meaning. Um, it helps Dale's piece.
Thank you.
So that's just one little tweak that we'll make.
Is it pre-1980 or pre the 93 that we use in most of the places? Or not?
Use the 1980?
Why is this, why is it 1980?
Where did the 93 come from?
Where does the 93 come from?
Our non-conforming lot of records. So we mentioned it in the area above that, mineral permits, lot, be subdivided, must be a lot of record existing prior to the adoption of this ordinance, March 9, 93. It mentions it.
It's 1980.
Uh, somewhere else.
You just said 93 when you were reading.
March 8, 94 for C1, uh, C2.
Repeating bad information.
I think we just, a couple of areas, that's, I had questions about the, the dates, because.
Yeah.
So we don't have a date there, we also, like, if we're going to talk about it, the aquifer overlay district, especially except for lots of record prior to the date of amendment, but we don't know the date of amendment. If that ever came before us, we'd have to try to dig into it.
So we can do digging.
Yeah, I'll email that to you, a couple of small things like that.
Yeah, so we were just going to say for this one, any, if, as your homework, just scan through, we'll send out the full version. Um, Steph has just a kind of a truncated version that she's circulated. Any of those like little nitpicky things that we may have missed, shoot them over.
Yep.
But those are not scintillating conversation.
I'd like to thank you guys for taking the time to hear the staff's concerns and recognize these two for the tremendous amount of work they put into this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Stephanie. Obviously, you know, we sit up here, but it's good to hear the actuality side of it too. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Dale.
Any other questions before we adjourn?
No questions, one quick comment. There's a lot of stuff that we looked at that won't be in this set for town meeting. I would make a recommendation that we, going into the new year, maybe schedule out specifically, look at meetings, maybe the second of the month, and have one item that we add to the agenda for each of them, just plan it out.
Okay, that's good.
Just so we know we moved through it and we don't have two and a quarter hour meetings to try to hit a lot of stuff at the same time.
Yeah.
We only have two more meetings until the end of the year.
Well, let's, let's bring out those dates, those important dates Steph had, well, why don't we just go through those now? If they haven't changed at all, we are on October 23rd, this is a planning board meeting, first review of rough draft for zoning edits. Our next meeting is November 13th. And that's when, uh, the first final draft will be complete and presented to the board for hearing consideration. So we're still on track for that? Good. Okay.
Next, next meeting, you guys need to vote, assess the hearing date, right?
Yeah, and just send them to hearing. So essentially, if you want to make changes to any of the drafts at the next meeting, you would, if you wanted to change them, you have to make the amendments to the draft as part of your motion. So you'd say, "I recommend to send this item to a hearing on the such and such a date with the following amendments." And then Steph could quickly type them up and make sure they're available for, um, public review afterwards, but they need to be done. Like those changes would need to be identified at that next meeting.
Okay.
I think you're in good, good shape, any changes would be kind of smaller changes at that point.
And then we'll have November 11th, it says first day of accepting petitions to amend zoning ordinances. That's two days before our meeting.
That's the.
That's public petitions, right?
Okay, public.
Not us.
And then November 19th, that's a zoning board meeting. December 11th would be the last day to accept petitions. And that would be the first zoning change, public hearing. Potentially. Be December 11th. All right, well, I think we're, it sounds like we're progressing. Looks good. We good?
I think so.
All right, you good?
I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, a move that we adjourn.
Second.
It's motion is second, those in favor.
Aye.